You on the record?
I'm wandering around.
I'm ready.
Hi, Jay.
Item number 19, 25415BZ, 98th Avenue, Y.
Good afternoon. Jay Goldstein, on behalf of Rothgrub, Rothgrub Inspector for the applicant.
That's why you're here.
I understand that the Board was happy with the responses and there are no questions.
Is there anyone to speak on this issue? Okay, any other comments that anyone can think of? Okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Sorry.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 20, 20161209BZ, 2701AUK, Brooklyn. So that's for Germans?
Yeah, it's a request for, at the prior hearing, we had a discussion whether we wanted to proceed in attempt to make the findings for the variance. My client has determined that they'd like to make a final attempt to pursue the variance application. So therefore, we request some time to make that application.
Oh, so you're going to make a further application?
Right.
Okay.
So then I think we need to set a schedule.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm just looking at the notes from that part, so, you know, let's say, the uniqueness study has to address that it's really affecting more than, I mean, the issue is, will this be used by future applicants to ask for variances on every single lot that's of a size similar to or smaller than this one? So you need to be able to say, no, I'm actually unique in all the way that is. And then the other part, I think, has to do with this discussion that we've had about the sort of minimum standards. You know, why couldn't the hazard right extension meet those requirements? And so, to help us brief us with those kinds of standards and arguments, and I know it's a little bit of case law subject also, so...
Well, we will do our best to address those issues, and hopefully, we're able to make the findings that support the variance.
Okay, so, January 31, you might be faced?
Room for that, for this, yeah. There's up to 14.
Oh, okay. So how about January 31 continues, and then this motion on January 11?
January 31, January 11?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item number 21, 20164124BZ, 238 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn. Received DOI? Oh, we did? Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Good morning, Jay Goldstein, or afternoon, Jay Goldstein, again, Rothgrub, Rothgrub Inspector. We were informed that you received DOI sign-off. Additionally, we have a letter from FIRE dated October 6, 2016, where they expressed that they had no issue with the application, but they requested that the fire alarm notes be added to the plans, and those fire alarm notes were added to the plans.
And submitted.
And submitted.
Okay, great. Are there any speakers on this? Then for a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number 22, 20164122BZ, 325 Avenue, Y, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon. Jay Goldstein for the applicant. I attended yesterday's review session, and I'd like to go through the Board's comments. With regard to parking, so as the Board noted at the last hearing, one of the neighbors did ask that we use the parking lot for perhaps to spill over cars, and we discussed at the last hearing that the 40 spaces, or the 20 spaces plus the stackers, was really a result of the community facility building, or medical building, that was proposed for the upper floors that never took, that never actually occupied the building. The stackers happened to be in place, I went afterwards and I did check, and that's how they got their CVO with the 40 spaces. The PCE does not use this parking lot for their operations. They utilize parking in the area, there's a supermarket that has excess spaces, and the PCE has a deal with them, where they, the members of the PC can actually use that parking.
Can you get us some information?
Proof? That information actually came from the neighbor, who's a member of the PCE, and said the PCE makes spaces available at that supermarket.
Can you give us something from the PCE operator?
I can try, yeah. But in addition to that, as noted yesterday, the PC's peak hours, really, the heavy, heavy use of this gym is going to be at night, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., where you'll see 100 people an hour, roughly. In the morning, the PC's hours of operation are 6:00 to 8:00 a.m., with about 30 to 40 people operating out of the gym. So, our school's proposal, the earliest arrival is 8:20 p.m., and we have the, 8:20 a.m., rather, and we have the DOT no parking sign, which is there from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and then again, from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. So with those measures in place, we're sure that the students can, or the buses, rather, can park in front of the school, unload our students. The available spaces for the, for the parents, if any, do drive in the morning. While we, the 8:20, we assumed, and as is practiced now, most of the students, or all the students, rather, will come on buses, but you do have instances where parents do drive their students, and we'll have teachers and staff members outside directing them into the parking lot, and not to double park. Additionally, for the later arrival, the younger students who arrive between 9:00 and 9:30 a.m., we anticipate 121 students taking the buses, which is about three buses, and those buses can easily line up right in front of the school. And then the remainder, 36 students, will arrive by private van and by private car. So they'll be sufficient, and we're confident there'll be sufficient space in front of the building, and in the parking lot, to accommodate these parents and these cars, so that we can try and not impact the neighboring businesses.
That has to work with the stackers?
We're going to remove the stackers. We're only proposing, we won't need 40 spaces, the 40 spaces were provided for the ambulatory use. We don't need that, we'll remove them and have 22 spaces, and those spaces, you know, will, that coupled with the frontage along Avenue Y, will ensure then no double parking. Additionally, the staff members on the street, and the staff members in the building, will coordinate the buses and the cars to ensure no double parking. The next comment, if I may, is we did increase the number of students from 624 to 631, that was my addition, I made a mistaken addition, but we did comment on the plans as requested by the Board, the proposed occupancy and the DOB occupancy, and that we're sticking with the proposed, the DOB occupancy is just based on the square footage calculation.
So the decision will not, the resolution will not, that there's something that's been...
With regard to the alternate site study, we did amend the alternate site study to reflect the catchment area where our students come from, Avenue S to Avenue Y, McDonald to Coney Island Avenue. We provided you with a chart that showed you lots that are of sufficient size, when factored with their floor area ratios, will allow for a development that can accommodate 40,000 square feet. At the prior hearing, the prior iteration of the alternate site study, gave you lots that were larger lots that could have accommodated it, but had buildings on it, and had active uses. And we were questioned on that fact, so with this study, only, the only lots we provided you are lots that are significant enough or sizable enough, when coupled with their floor area ratio, to allow the school, to potentially allow for the development of a school that would meet our needs. And we came up with 16 lots, and we showed how each one of those lots is occupied by an active use and not for, not available. Just as a, as a note, I did go through all of the other larger lots to confirm that there are no vacant buildings, all of the other larger lots in the area that would have shown up as a FAR of four, FAR of six, whatever the number may be, have multiple dwellings on them, or larger commercial buildings. So there are, those lots are also not available, even though they're not part of our study. With regard to the indoor noise study, so, we did our, we hired Lolly to do our indoor noise study, and the noise study was done pursuant to SEACER regulations. SEACER regulations take the average of the hour and give you that number as your baseline of what is acceptable or what is not acceptable. So understanding the Chair's point, the number based on the SEACER manual is, we are compliant based on the requirements of the SEACER manual and that. As Mr. Singer explained yesterday, the level of noise actually wasn't significant, it's not as if you're sitting on the train track when those trains drive by, and it's really a loud screeching noise. It was more of a conversation in a restaurant, I think was the term he used. Important to keep in mind is that this room was actually unfurnished when it was, when it was, the noise study was done. So when you add furnishings, and you add students, and you add a teacher speaking, the audible volume of these trains passing by won't affect the continuance of these schools, of the classes, rather.
You said...
I live back, the back of my apartment, the windows face the Long Island Railroad train tracks. Every hour, every half hour, the train goes by. We never hear it. You have furniture, you have a TV going, you're talking to your spouse, you don't hear it. You get used to it. We don't think it'll be an impact. There are other numerous...
That's different than not hearing.
But it's not something that's disruptive on a day-to-day basis, every three minutes you're not going to be disrupted. So therefore, based on the noise study, we do believe that we've, we have satisfied the finding related to noise of the surrounding areas, that we comply with the, with the SEACER findings. With regard to the traffic study, again, we're working with DOT, and we're responding to the questions that the Board gave, that the staff gave us, and we will submit those questions as soon as possible, those responses as soon as possible. With regard to bus storage, actually put it in my response, I don't know, or bus parking, rather, not during delivery, dismissal, and arrival, it's in my response papers, I don't, it's in my, for sure in my response to notice comments, the first hearing, may not be in the statement of facts, I apologize, but unlike a lot of the other schools that the Board sees, we don't actually own these buses. We, we contract with company, so the company has a parking lot at 6065 Strickland Avenue, where their bus depot is. So the buses won't stay in front of our site, because they'll go do other things during the day, they'll have trips for other schools, or whatever bus companies use their buses for during the day. But it won't be parked in front of the school, either at night or during the day. With regard to the number of bathrooms, the number of bathrooms are sufficient, specifically, all of the younger students have bathrooms in their, in their classrooms, in addition to the bathrooms that are available in, in the, on the floor, the general bathrooms. And just based on the, on the school, this is what they anticipate as being sufficient to meet their needs.
Your code?
It's code compliant, the question, it, I believe it's code compliant, we have no issues with, or I'll have the architect review it one more time?
That's the thing, like you provide, I find very helpful, those calculations for trash storage, there must be...
I can look into it.
...for number of rooms, for population.
I'll look into it. With regard to the indoor air quality, the study was done, and it was sent to the lab, and we actually got the results, and now we're writing the report. I'm happy to announce that the air quality inside the building is actually significantly better than the air quality outside. You have very good, you have very good air quality in the building, we had no problems, and we anticipate no problems, I'll submit the report as soon as possible. Next was with regard to the trash room and the calculations. Again, this is an existing building, and we're trying to maximize the space, so the only available space really is there, is the proposed refrigerated room in the basement. We gave you the calculations to show that we well, well exceed the minimum needed.
But is that only the perishable trash, or that's probably imperishable?
So initially, we were going to propose to have a, on the side yard, there's a, they put a, they could put a trash bin, enclosed trash bin for the dry goods. The Chair had expressed her wishes that it not be there, so just as a matter of, you know, trying to utilize our space...
You're going to start, you're going to buy a fridge, those are very expensive.
They can, they may do half the space based on calculations, half the space, I can determine...
Can you do the...
I can do the calculations for dry versus perishable, but just, the calculations are similar, in that we well exceed what is actually needed.
But I mean, to Commissioner Sean this point, there's like nowhere to get from here to there, so if the refrigerated storage were in one place, and the...
You know what, I'll do the calculations and show it on the plan where it would be.
Yeah, so, but the point, you've heard that comment, so the comment was, you have to walk through a refrigerator...
To get to the electrical room. So I did the, actually, in response to that, I did the calculations. If we take off three feet to make a hallway, to actually access, make a corridor to get to the electrical room, we still have 168 square feet of space in this room, which is 49.78 cubic yards, or 1,344 cubic feet. We, based on the calculations, need 3.9 cubic yards, or 22.3 cubic feet. So we have sufficient room to play with this refrigerated room, to accommodate dry storage, cold storage, and a corridor. And the last, the last comment was regarding the acoustical barrier for the HVAC, I don't remember that at the last hearing, we were discussing rooftop play areas, so I apologize if I missed it, but we can show it on the plans.
So you're going to show...
Well, I'm going to, we wrap, there's a, there's a wrapping for HVAC systems, that's pretty standard, I'll show that on the plans. So I believe that was all the questions. So the, the only outstanding issues, I believe, are really the, the traffic with regard to DOT, and the, and the indoor air quality. And we'll revise, with that, the tech memo and the EAS will be revised to show the updated materials.
Okay. Everybody that came with, are there any speakers on this? Okay, so we do need to wait for that other area?
I can do, if we can get on the January 31st, that'd be great.
Okay.
I don't think there's much in between.
So, January 31?
Is there, what other hearing dates do you have in January?
January 31.
I mean, you, what's available in January?
January 31.
Yeah.
Let's do it, no problem.
So January 31, within a January 11 submission, but obviously, these are responses...
Yeah, it'll be...
Yeah, so if they sign off, it doesn't matter when they sign off, obviously, if they sign off, they're going to respond.
Correct, no problem. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, new case, new cases, we're going to take item number three first, Snyder &amp; Snyder, 205 West 95th Street, Manhattan, that's 20164228BZ.
Thank you for your combination.
I just have, before you start, sorry, I'd just like to mention, in light of what I said on the review session, Board Counsel like to submit to the Board this applicant and all future applicants, that Counsel is meeting for discussion with DOB regarding the continued applicability of TPPN 598 in light of the Spectrum Act 2012, and has been advised that the TPPN may be subject to reevaluation. But to the extent that this application does not raise any concerns, to the Board's ability to provide the requested relief pursuant to Article 7, Chapter 3 of the zoning resolution, Commissioners may continue their consideration of the application.
Have you been in touch with DOB about revising their TPPN?
Yeah, and the necessity of having to come here for a special permit when it may be permitted, just as of right, a matter of just applying for DOB.
Hi, thank you all very much, and thank you for taking me out of order. My name is Ed Tyber, and I'm here today from the law firm of Snyder &amp; Snyder, in support of New York SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless's special permit application to expand its existing equipment room in the basement of the existing, or in the cellar of the existing building at 205 West 95th Street. Verizon Wireless requires a special permit for its expansion, because it will be exceeding the permitted 400 square feet under TPPN 598. On November 1st, the Community Board 7 unanimously approves the resolution for the expanded equipment room. I attended your executive session yesterday, and with the Department of Buildings TPPN revision address, I just wanted to note that nothing is being added to the roof. The roof does comply with TPPN 598, if applicable, however, I just wanted to note that those are not cellular antennas on the roof, they're GPS antennas on the roof. So that there's, cellular pertains to a frequency, and are also send-receive antennas, GPS antennas are a much lower frequency, and they only receive satellite transmissions, they don't send anything back.
And not subject to the TPPN?
That is an academic question that I don't have an answer for, I'd be interested to see what DOB thinks about that, but just, yeah, just...
They're not increasing the number as they were approved by DOB?
Exactly, and the permits that they were, were permitted by are noted on the plans, and, but, you know, those are existing conditions, I just wanted to clarify. Asking, some issues about noise were discussed yesterday at the executive session. So the proposed equipment is not going to be audible above the existing HVAC unit in the cellar. Equipment room right now, there isn't HVAC unit, which is going to remain, it's going to be relocated slightly, just to be against the wall, but I'm...
Is that the HVAC system connected with your equipment, or the building's HVAC?
Our, our equipment.
So, so the reason that I'm asking is, now you look, we don't look at the delta, we look at the entirety of the installation, because we didn't review it before, right?
Right.
So if it is a source of noise, or vibration, or something, something, then we can ask, what have you done to isolate that vibration and noise from the neighbors who might be...
Certainly within your purview for this application. So in terms of mitigation of any noise, first off, you know, I'd submit, that HVAC unit is existing, it's been there for, for a number of years, there's been no, no complaints from residents of the building, but, but to, as the Chairwoman, you know, requested, so the ceiling of the cellar is a cement slab, and it is substantially below grade with masonry walls, so, you know, any, any, I submit that those, you know, concrete structures would offer any, any mitigation, but like I said previously, that mitigation, you know, that unit has not proven a problem in the, in the life of this installation. As to construction, construction is going to be done, you know, during the day, during workdays during the day, since this is a residential building, and will be done with hand tools, hand and power tools, you know, in compliance with, with Department of Building regulations. And lastly, just, it's actually amazing, out of the FCC order, you went exactly to the crux of what a substantial change is regarding the equipment cabinets, so congratulations for a shortcut. But yeah, so the equipment cabinets, the, the exact equipment that is going to be placed in the cellar is, you know, is constantly changing, this equipment is, you know, very cutting-edge, so the exact models of the equipment, you know, I don't have, I just confirmed with the client yesterday, they don't know exactly the model number of the equipment that will be down there, but I did confirm that whatever goes down there and will be submitted to Department of Buildings, we will have no more than four cabinets, and any remaining equipment will be on open racks, so it'll be considered an eligible facilities request under the FCC order.
So, hold on with that just a second, because what it said was, if you install more than four cabinets, right?
Yes.
So you will ultimately have more than four, or you're saying, no, you'll only ever have four?
No, well, so our interpretation of the FCC order is, is not that there's not permitted more than four cabinets ever, but that it would be a substantial change to propose four, more than four new cabinets.
Right.
So we're proposing no more than four new cabinets, in addition to whatever cabinets are there existing. And with the remaining equipment located not in cabinets, but in open racks in the cellar.
So is that a way around cabinet rule? Like, what's the difference between a cabinet and a rack?
Yeah, the FCC has not defined a cabinet, you know, and there's certain, and certainly in with other, in New York City, but there's been other, I don't know if there's been litigation, but there's been a lot of issue as to whether battery cabinets are, consist of an equipment cabinet, or those are counted separately, so...
So let me ask you a question, I mean, to just say amongst yourselves that this is swell, right, is different than having the agency, the FCC, that regulates you, decide, right? Isn't this the kind of thing where you go to the FCC, whoever it is, you ask the FCC, and say to them, this is what we're installing, is this a substantial change, and then, I don't know what that does for us?
I mean, so the FCC will not give a response for a specific, for a specific application or a specific site?
It's the government agency that determine based on FCC rules, to apply those, apply those rules...
Precisely.
...to the application in front of you, and ascertain whether or not it's a substantial change.
And if it is a substantial change, then what?
Then we have the power to, in, in, put in conditions, or to deny the request.
The, the crux of the 2014 FCC order, and what, you know, I really think this is kind of academic for the special permit that we're requesting here today, but just for your, you know, background knowledge, if this comes up again, or you're personally interested, is that the, under the 2014 FCC regulations, a site that's considered an eligible facilities request, has, as your Counsel indicated, streamlined guidance, you know, it must be approved, it has streamlined application materials, and most critically, though, is after 60 days of submitting the application, if, if that 60 days has been told by a request for, for additional information, the application is deemed granted, and so, so there's a lot of, you know, kind of doom and gloom nuclear talk about what that really means, are people going to just, you know, let those 60 days pass and then build sites without approvals? All of that is not, you know, obviously, I'm here today for you, because I respect the New York City zoning resolution, we want to make sure the Department of Buildings and the city is, is, you know, looks fondly upon Verizon Wireless, so, you know, this is not my, or my client's course of action in light of the FCC rules, but that, you know, that's just kind of, that speaks to the, if it is an eligible facilities request, arguably under the FCC regulations put out in 2014, it would be, you know, it could be permitted as an administrative approval deemed granted.
I also want to add that the, the portion of the FCC's rule about the four cabinets, it reads, for any eligible support structure, it involves installation, a substantial change, it involves installation of more than the standard number of new equipment cabinets for the technology involved, but not to exceed four cabinets. So that allows the kind of evolution of technology...
But it can't exceed four cabinets?
Right, but that's what he's talking about, open racks, like, the industry is kind of...
Yeah, it's not defined terms.
It's not.
Right.
It's not.
Wow. Okay, anyway, that's what we have. We're not looking at a, this is different, we've had some facilities where the amount of stuff that they're adding is kind of mind-boggling, seems very minimal, it's all in the cellar, I mean, not adding it, comparing this away someplace, we're building a facility that's expanding, so it's, it's more of a learning where we fit in the story.
Sure.
But, yeah. Okay. You actually wanted more information about the height of the antenna? I, I did, but since you're, it wasn't clear to me whether or not you were putting new antennas on the roof, so if you're not putting new antennas on the roof...
Zero work is in the roof.
...has already approved what they have there. There then, I have no further issue.
No, thank you.
Okay, so my only concern was about whether there was noise, or electromagnetic fields, or anything like that, it goes on residents directly above, so it doesn't...
Actually, I actually have one question, because you said that you haven't finalized what equipment will go in the cellar, does that at all affect the plans they submitted here, and whether they can go to DOB, and DOB will...
I mean, I just meant specifically, we don't have, like, a model number.
Oh, okay, okay.
But they take up the amount of space that is shown on the plan.
That's representative of the plan.
Definitely, right.
And those ones could be on a rack, versus those ones could be on a cabinet, right?
Correct.
Okay. Right? This, you should know, that like what we approve is, that's what you get, right?
Understood.
Because you have to come back.
Come back, understood.
All right, anybody else, any other things? Are there any speakers on this? Okay, so thank you for your explanation and so on, that's different, so for a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
And a motion to grant. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Hinkson?
Aye.
Commissioner Montanez?
Aye.
Commissioner Utley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Chanda?
Aye.
Thank you all very much, once again, thank you for accommodation, and have a nice rest of your afternoon.
Item number one, 17414BZ, 820 East 186th, 82nd Street, The Bronx.
My name is Glenn Dockry, I'm representing Jim Cousy, PE. We're seeking an extension of term, existing term for this location, so, there's no changes proposed. It lapsed, I guess, years ago, no one paid attention to it, we went to get a new CVO, realized it has to be updated, so that's what we're proposing.
Did you listen to our comments from yesterday's review session?
No, I did not.
Okay, so, so you know in the future, because you're going to be coming back?
Gee, I... I look forward to seeing you again. Spoiler alert. Okay.
On the Monday before the hearing, as in yesterday...
Okay.
we have a meeting at 10 o'clock, that goes for about an hour and a half to two hours, where the commissioners and staff discuss the applications and what we reviewed.
Okay.
And we have, and we reveal our questions there. That's, the intention of that is so that the applicant can, to the extent possible, be ready with some answers.
I see.
Sometimes they're so ready that we're done, they actually make changes to the drawings and all that, that actually wouldn't have been your case. But, but so anyway, so what I'll do, so for the next time, you should do that, and information, so you can attend the review session,
Okay.
but you're not allowed to speak.
I see.
You can listen. And by the end of the day, like, by what time?
About 2 o'clock.
By about 2 o'clock, the video, because we're being taped, by about 2 o'clock, it's mounted online, on the BSA website, you can actually click on it,
Yeah.
and watch the session, so you don't actually have to come all the way down there.
Fantastic, okay.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through our comments, and then the other commissioners will add things, pick up something out that they said yesterday. Okay, we don't have community board recommendation, and when I was looking at your proofs of service,
Mm-hmm.
it doesn't look like you serve the community board, or the neighbors, which is required, in which case, this isn't valid here, and they have to have been served.
Okay.
So you need to either show us that they were served, because you did have proof that, like, the Department of City Planning
Planning, correct.
the Borough President, but not the community board, and not the neighbors.
Okay.
Because you have a list of neighbors?
Yes.
Those people are supposed to get notice of here. And, and if that hasn't happened, then we're going to need, what's the amount of time, like a 60-day, 30?
30 days.
Yeah, 30 days, but I mean, in terms of getting out the notice and all that sort of stuff, we're going to need about a 60-day window, and give proper notice in the next year.
Okay.
Right? Okay, and then I was asking why there's been a two-year delay in prosecuting the application. The notice of comments that the board sent out went out two years ago, it's like our second anniversary on the first notice of comments, so I'd like to understand what happens during those.
Does it have to be a rational response?
No, I often hear irrational answers.
Okay. All right.
Do you know it now, or do you want to...
We just got caught up doing so many other things, and it fell through the cracks.
That, so, so there's something that you say in your statement, that you're going to be converting a storage room to a containment store, but I don't know if that's true, or if this, I can't tell from the drawings what's being converted, of what you're going to do.
So that needs to be clarified then?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do that.
And again, as we're speaking here, you can listen to this on tape, because you can't take notes at the same time.
Right.
And the other one is, oh, you provided a whole stack of resolutions from prior board approvals, none of which were legible. So when you make a PDF of something, and email it, please check before you hit the send button that you can read the consent.
I see, okay.
Your scanner or something like that. And by the way, the PSA resolutions are available online, so you shouldn't be printing it and scanning it and then sending it, you can get them correctly online, and save them on your computer in a good form.
Right.
Also, in terms of what we saw in photographs, there is an unenclosed dumpster, the trash has to be stored in an enclosure.
Okay.
It can't just be out there and open. There's also clothes bins and extraneous signage that's not allowed to be stored on site, so those have to be removed, actually, and enclosure needs to be created, but in the interest of helping you, because like, we know that you're not a regular applicant, that we'll show on the plans where you're planning to put the dumpster first,
Yeah.
and what the enclosure is going to look like first, so that we can discuss with you what's, what's a good idea. The whole, the whole point is that this is a residential district.
Yes.
And that this use, which is not normally associated with residential districts, we try to soften the impact of the use of the residents. So to the extent you can, the trash enclosures, fencing around the site, landscaping makes the site, let's say, more pleasant than it might currently be, right? And, but yeah, so we also saw that there are doors and rolling gates that need to be painted, there's cracked concrete walls for PD, and open tire storage hole which has to be repaired. And then, there's apparently three operations going on, including a car wash.
Right.
The drawings don't show where these operations take place. Is there a car wash area, is there a repair area, the drawings need to show that. Then, oh, we need the hours of operation of all of these activities. And then the parking spaces, there was a, there was a grant for five spaces, but it looks like we have more than that in parking. So you need to, you need to show us on the drawings how many parking spaces you're proposing, and then also show us the service space, where they are and how many there are.
Yeah.
Okay? And then, I get to pick this up at the site, and one of the comments from Commissioner Montanez was, was that the site is very severe and adjacent to residential windows, so we need what we call beautification plan, really nice fencing, landscaping, enclosing, that's a trash storage and that kind of stuff.
And an illumination plan in this case.
And a what?
And an illumination.
Oh, lighting.
Oh, lighting.
So, you know, where the lighting fixtures are,
Okay.
for to light the site, and then what we do is we want to know that the light isn't spilling onto the adjacent residential property, so you have to provide light shields, and the plan indicates what the lumens are by the time they reach the ground, okay? Because the goal is that they drop down to zero on property lines. Okay? Anything else? Okay, so, it's a lot to do.
Yeah.
We're going to guide you as much as we can, so it's not an eternal voyage. So if you would go back to your office, listen tomorrow to this hearing, and then also to the one yesterday, where we said this, we're the same thing, but you'll hear it in a little more elaborate, a little more elaborated, because I was summarizing what the other commissioners said. And then make a list for yourself of everything that's on there, and make sure that shows up on the plans.
Right.
Then we'll give you direction about what it is you should actually install. And you need to do that work before you can consider moving an application to extend this use, okay? Because we use this as an opportunity to clean up the site, which things fell through the cracks along the site.
Yes.
Okay? So, okay. And if you need any specific guidance...
I think Carlo's the...
Carlo's the project manager. Okay, so I don't know if you have his contact information?
Yes, I do.
So you should call Carlo when he knows this application, or an old one like this intimately, so if you have questions, just call him.
I'll reach out to him, okay.
So, there can't be any speakers unless they're doing other stuff, okay? So anybody else, any other comments? Okay, so then I'd just like to set up the time for you to come back, okay? So, February 14th, would be the next year and date, which means put in your calendar, February 13th at 10 o'clock,
Right.
this year, or you listen at 2 o'clock to a video, and then you submit before that, January 25th. Yeah, January 25th, you'll submit the drawings that we just talked about, the materials that we just talked about.
Got you.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Item number two, 2161217BZ, 45 Southgate Court, Brooklyn.
Good afternoon, Jay Goldstein for the applicant. With regards to this case, so I heard the board's comments yesterday, and first and foremost, I'd like to explain one point, and that I think will lead into the other points. The confusion regarding the court, and the court waiver that we're requesting, it doesn't have to do with the entryway on West First, it has to do on the lot, on the side yard that's adjoining the home along Southgate Court. Since the home is a zero lot line home, any addition to the property which is not on the lot line would be creating an outer court. And that court would be, and that court would require, in our fourth district, to have an equal depth to length.
So, so before you go there, so, 2383 says that the outer court regulations don't apply to single or two-family detached residences. Are you saying then you're not a two-family detached, I think you're a two-family, you're not a two-family detached?
The, that is a question that we discussed today with members of the board. So we initially brought this application as a 73622, or it wasn't filed, but it was brought to the board for a preliminary application meeting, and the board instructed us to pursue the variance, because they believe that the 73622 was not within their purview to grant because of this specific issue, or most importantly, this issue.
This was a stat column, you may have been mistaken, move back to...
Right, so...
So the question really is, if it's a zero lot line building, is a zero lot line building considered a one or two-family dwelling, or is it a different entity into itself? The special permit of 73622 allows for single-family or two-family detached, or semi-detached properties. If a zero lot line building is considered a one-family or a two-family dwelling, and the board feels that we can comply with the 73 and can pursue a 73622, then my client would pursue that and would review the options. But based on conversations with members of the staff, it was determined that that couldn't happen. So I don't know if...
But it has to do with the definition, so I'm just looking at this.
Mr. Counsel, can you clarify what the condition is?
Sure, the existing home...
Is there some space?
The existing home has zero one-inch, zero quarter-inch, zero two-inch, depending on the portion of the home.
No, it is considered a zero lot line building, but DOB has considered them if they're not like, over four inches from the lot.
That's a DOB interpretation?
That's DOB interpretation, yeah.
So this board has, I found a number of variances where they, where the board has granted zero, two instances, in my research this morning, two instances where the board's granted zero lot line, zero-zero. There were a number of instances where the board granted zero seven inches, zero eleven inches, zero eight inches.
Counsel, 73622s are a variant?
73622s. Most recently, 105-10BZ was amended by this board under 73622 to allow it. However, if the determination by DOB is going to send us back here and, you know, ultimately send us to the same place, we'd prefer to address that now.
Also, why do you think, okay, let's say we went ahead with the 73622, why do you think DOB would send you back here?
This is based on conversation with Mr. Singer, where they determine, DOB has determined, I believe, that zero lot line buildings do not, are not eligible for the 73622.
So the 73622 is available to detached and semi-detached.
Right, but has DOB determined that in the case of like 105-10BZ, right?
I saw that this morning, I'd have to follow.
So if you read the definition, a detached building is a building surrounded by yards or other open area on the same zoning line.
Right.
And a semi-detached building is one that is attached to another building, regardless of zoning law lines.
Right.
And this is, so this is...
Well, zero lot line, zero lot line is also...
Sitting on the lot.
No, but it isn't...
Zero lot line is also a defined term.
And it's not, it doesn't have...
Exactly, so a deep, so a zero lot.
Zero lot line.
Zero lot line, yes, zero lot line is also a defined term, where you're, you're, you have zero lot line along one of the side lots, again, that's not the, not a direct quote, and then you're, you're, you have lots, you have yards or other lot lines, or a street line or yards on the other three, the other three sides.
Street lines or yards. Right, so, but, but DOB, where do we, we have a TPPN, how do we know that DOB views this as a four-inch away? Like, what's that based on? Is it the zoning resolution, is it DOB preference?
It also could be, I mean, if you think about the definition of use group one,
Single.
Single or two-family detached. The problem is, is that nowhere in any of our, sort of enacting the definition or the special permit, does it say that we can grant these to zero lot line buildings.
But you're calling it a zero lot line building, where we're not sure what zero lot line really is according to the definition in the zoning resolution. The definition of zero lot line doesn't say within four inches of the lot, or of it.
So, so, mention, is it a four-inch side yard?
Well, it says there's two and a quarter inches on this side, right? So it's not exactly sitting on the lot.
It's not sitting on the lot.
Well, two and a quarter inches is considered a zero lot line building, because I think it's up to seven inches or something.
Where does it say that?
It's in, we had a case like that once, I remember, it's like up to seven inches, it's considered a lot line building.
Where...
I think it's in the zoning, in the...
No, it's not in the zoning resolution, it's not in the zoning, I think it's a building department interpretation.
At least two instances the board has granted zero-zero. So if it's codified that that four inches is the minimum for a side yard versus zero lot line, I'm happy to, to...
See, that's the thing, if we...
Is it the buildings department interpretation of the zero lot line, or that?
I think it is. Right, where do you get, how do you get seven inches to be zero?
From your new counsel.
Coming in strong.
He happens to know a little bit about this subject. The document clarifies side yard regulations, compliance with structural separations, as I was telling you specifically. You know, you're allowed to speak at these meetings.
Yeah, you are.
Why don't you tell us, you're allowed to have your... Yeah, you can sit in here, yeah, get used to speaking more public than before.
Okay. So Buildings Bulletin 201611 is a technical determination that involves structural separations that are required by the building code, requiring structures to be separated from adjacent buildings to limit the structural and non-structural damage caused by pounding from adjacent buildings during an earthquake, and so it deals with how to treat side yards under the zoning resolution. So they have to be separate, a little bit, about an inch of separation for each 50 feet of total building height.
But that doesn't apply, that's when you have two buildings that are right next to each other, does that apply when you have a building that's off of the side yard, and your house is, just happens to be on the side yard?
Those are seismic regulations.
Yeah. I'm not sure that, I, I'm happy to review that, I have never seen it, it's fairly new, but I'm happy to review it, but it seems to be dealing with when you have abutting buildings that are not sharing a party wall.
So, so curious, can you research, we'll do it on this side too, but you can go on your side, can you research, you know, approximately zero lot line 73622s?
I can, I can do some research.
And then we can call the application, so then we can see on the drawings what they will...
So I have the, I have the resolutions and the, and the plans, I can submit those for the, for the, for the cases I mentioned, which are zero-zero, I have the plans and the resolutions already. The question really is, so one of them was modified January of 2016, I'm not sure it's gone through DOB yet. What I'd hate to have, or hate to happen is for us to modify this to become a 73622, me go to DOB, and then say, go back and get a variance. So if we can try and get something from, from DOB or counsel to make that determination as well, that'd be, that'd be great. Because it's better than me saying it, because I don't hold much weight at DOB.
So because the issue with the variance, which we talked about a lot, is so far the argument for why this is a unique condition is that is the sighting of the building on the lot, and so, and the argument for why that's posing a problem. But when I move, you know, I literally move in my head, the building down around the lot, wherever, I don't get a different outcome. So I don't see that the sighting is presenting a problem, unless you say, because it's a zero lot line, I don't qualify for a 622, but that's not an adequate project.
But I have, I'm unique in that, so I mentioned yesterday, the existing building is 2,200 square feet.
Right.
The CVO calls it a basement, that's why we classified it as a basement. However, this was an existing two-family home, and if you look at the pictures and you look at the plans, majority of the, about 900 square feet out of that 2,200 square feet is actually in a basement with foot and a half windows, these little, you know, what you typically see in a basement or a cellar.
In a basement or in a cellar?
So again, that's what I'm explaining. We viewed it as a cellar, and the proposed plans actually call it a cellar, and we would, we would drop the height a little bit to make sure that it was called a cellar, because to have this as a habitable space, it's really, majority of this is in a cellar, in a, in a below-grade situation. So you're not having 2,200 square feet of above-grade house, you have about 1,300 square feet of above-grade. So the first floor is, is 890, 890 square feet, and then you have an... So the first floor is, is 890, 890 square feet, and then you have an attic which has two bedrooms. So while the, you know, while a 2,200 square foot house may be nice, the, having bedrooms in this basement, or having your living room and dining room and kitchen in this basement would.
Wait a minute, I'm looking at the existing plans that show you've got, I don't know if I'm showing this slide, that shows six foot six from the underside of the first floor, to something aligned with the whole basement. Then there's another dash line in the, I don't know, is that the slab in the basement?
Right.
Because it's not measuring anywhere specific.
Okay, I can clarify that, but that's, that's essentially our point. As you can see from the existing plans, majority of the kitchen space, living room, is really in what's tantamount to a cellar. And when we had our basement.
It's not saying, no, if you look at the.
It's calling it a basement because that was a, because that's what it's on the CVO.
No, but if you're, if you look at the sections, it's a basement and not that subterranean.
But if you look at the pictures.
It's only showing it maybe a foot and a half or something, because it's not mentioned.
I'll get, I'll get better dimensions to show what's actually going on there, but if you look at the pictures, you can see that it's really very much below grade, and the windows are extremely small and having your living room dining.
Well, the windows being small, that's a choice, you can make the window bigger.
But there's only so much, they can enlarge them to actually make this a nice.
Was this created as a one family?
The CVO from the 50s, it showed as a two family.
Since, well, what was it when it was?
I believe, the first records I have of it are as a two family, and I believe that a lot of these homes are two families. I believe it was a two family.
No, but. So, and then the other thing is that you're, in your proposed, you're lifting, you're excavating the cellar so it's deeper. In the proposed, you're lifting or you're excavating?
You're making the basement into a cellar.
Right.
Yeah. It's physically a basement.
Right now, but it will be a cellar.
Right.
Because you're excavating.
Yeah.
You're lowering the cellar, the floor.
So you're dropping the slab to make it a cellar so that you got one of 50% below grade. But that's mostly to get it not to count as floor area where it currently counts as floor area, so you're actually really extremely enlarging the house, and the cellar doesn't count as floor area, so that's more like a, that's an, that's an affectation of, that's not something that we consider to be a hardship, because you're creating a cellar space so that you.
No, the hardship is the existing, the existing space. To have your, to have your, your living room, dining room, kitchen in a space that's, that's that much, that's in a basement, or have your bedrooms in a space that's a basement, is not something that is, you know, you, that's not something that's ideal, it's not something that's normal, it's not something that's done nowadays on a, for a single family home.
Plus, the floor to ceiling height is shown as six feet six inches.
Right.
In the basement.
So that, okay.
That's, that's substandard, right.
Because it's gotta be, I think it's seven six, it's gotta be seven six in a home ceiling height.
So again, this, this home really, the existing condition of the home is that it's, or the hardship that we're, we're really dealing with first and foremost is, we're, our positioning creates a situation where we can't enlarge anything as of right. That's why I only gave you that one sheet of the as of right plans, because with this court regulation, five by five, that's all you get.
So, I'm sorry, we never really cleared up this court regulation. I'm not totally getting why the court rule lies unless DOB reads so tightly that because you're arguably a zero lot line, you don't get the.
Exactly.
But that's only if.
If we're a zero lot line, or the, the intercourt issue became an issue because we were viewed as a zero lot line by staff.
By our staff?
Correct.
I mean DOB.
That's, we're getting, that'll, that'll be our homework after this hearing.
Yeah, okay.
But the reason we got to, how we got to where we are today is that, through our discussions with staff, it was determined that this is a, this zero lot line condition creates a zero lot line building, and therefore, any enlargement would create this court issue. And therefore, by creating a court issue, you cannot go, you can't, the, the board as an entity doesn't have the power to waive the court regulations pursuant to 73622, and the only way to go about this was to go through the variance process.
So then, let's go back and look at the house again. So let's just say the cellar level, basement level, basement cellar, I'm not sure, because I don't have, we don't have the math.
I'll get it too.
The drawings make it look like a, right, so, the, but the ceiling height, if you were to drop it down to be legal, that might send you.
That sends you into a cellar level.
Not legally and have the whole space, I don't think.
Or you raise, or you raise, the alternative is to raise the floor, the first floor.
Once you're raising the first floor, you're pretty much taking away the whole building.
Well, not really, because we see a lot of 622s where they raise the.
Well, that would make it less in neighborhood character if you're going to make it a two-story.
So, but you've got an existing nine foot floor to floor height on this first floor, and, so, and the next question, which I didn't have a chance to look up, is what's the, what are the rules about vertical enlargement of a single family home within its own footprint? Not, not an extension like 73622 deals with, but a vertical enlargement? Because there are some that allow you to log and large in the footprint, I just don't know if this one. What?
That sheet I gave?
Oh, yeah.
Where is it?
Yeah, this one. Okay. 54313, single or two family residence, doesn't say detached. Is this in R4?
Yes, this is in R4.
R4, okay. For an existing single or two family residence, doesn't say detached, with a non-compliant front yard, this has a non-compliant front yard, an enlargement involving a vertical extension of the existing building walls facing non-compliant front yard is permitted, so that gives you the front yard. The portion of the building which is being vertically extended complies with the heightened setback regulations, the non-compliant front yard where the building wall is being vertically extended is at least 10 feet in depth.
The front yard is at least 10 feet in, well, that.
We have a zero front yard.
That's strange.
Yeah, so this doesn't, that doesn't hold here.
Okay, notwithstanding the above, the provisions of this paragraph shall also be applicable in R4A. For an existing single, this is B, for an existing single or two family residence with a non-compliant side yard, an enlargement involving a vertical extension of existing building walls facing such non-compliant side yard is permitted, divided, the portion of the building which is being vertically extended complies with the heightened setback regulations applicable to an R32. The non-compliant side yard where the building wall is being vertically extended is at least three feet in width, and the minimum distance between such building wall and the nearest building wall.
So we're zero lot line again?
Yeah, yeah, so.
So that doesn't.
The question is, can you look at 54313 and see if anything.
Can help.
Has to vertically extend, even if it's a setback extension?
Okay.
Okay?
What about 533?
It actually makes it.
What? What's that?
Sorry.
I don't know what you're looking for.
About the lot lines. So in exterior, this is from a borough super, this is a memo from DOB 1986. An exterior wall of an existing building which is not more than six inches off the lot line shall be considered as being on the lot line.
Well, it's also in the word, there's a def, defined word, butts.
No, yeah.
A butts is six inches.
Yeah.
So it just follows that.
That makes sense, zero lot. Because less than six inches is considered to be on the lot line.
And the butts is in the zero lot line definition.
The question is, is zero lot line, one of the defined terms for dwelling, you have a one family home, a two family home, detached, semi-detached, is zero lot line something that takes you out of the 622? That's something we need clarification on.
The six.
622 specifically only allows for one family, two family, and semi-detached?
No, it's one, it's single or two family detached or semi-detached.
Right.
Can apply. It does not say zero lot.
That's what I'm asking, yes.
Specific defined term.
And so we've seen, commissioners, we have seen recently an application that went to DOB for 622 objection, was sent out with an objection for, to get a variance from board because of the zero lot line. So this isn't sort of.
It's not granted.
Yeah.
And then, concerning the, the court regulations, the zoning does contradict itself. It, in 2383, it discusses what the, sort of sets the parameters for this, the courts, and says that however regulate, these regulations shall not apply to any single or two family detached residence, which I guess could mean that, that since this is not a detached residence, that it could apply. But then in 23841, it says that in R3, R4, and R5 districts, for single and two family residences, three stories or less in height, there's specific regulations for the undercourt. So my reading of that is that, yes, indeed, the court regulations would apply in this case. This is not a detached, because it's a zero lot line.
Okay, so I suppose to say, pardon me, say, we're back at the variance discussion?
Right.
And we need to make this an extremely unique building, and I don't think we got there.
So, well, I will amplify my, my uniqueness finding, and I'll also, per the board's comment yesterday, I'll, I'll break down the studies a little more in detail, the FAR studies, the lot coverage studies to show character in the neighborhood and things like that. But in terms of uniqueness, I do, I do believe, and I'll get you the dimensions for the, for the basement, that if we wanted to create a, a basement level that's habitable, we'd have to lower the floors, and if we have to lower the floors, we'd create a cellar, a cellar condition.
Right.
Which is not.
What you're doing now in the proposed, you're lowering the floors.
It's a cellar, it's not a basement.
Right, so I'd say with that one, you've got, according to the information you provided, six foot six inch ceiling, floor to ceiling height, in something that's labeled, the living room, dining rooms, and I don't know how anybody lives in a six foot, even me, and I'm sure, I don't think I can live in a six foot six inch.
Right.
Or is it probably legal, so, but however, it might have been labeled inverted that way, I think, as you mentioned.
And additionally, I'll, it's not to mention on the existing plans, but I'll have to mention the heights for the, for the attic level. Those rooms in the attic level also are fairly short and.
Well, but that seems to be, I mean, you've got really high, according to sections again, very high floor to peak, of 11 foot seven, but perhaps, yeah, you really need to mention all of the.
I'll dimension everything, right.
What are the habitable spaces in there, so that in the end.
You're down to about.
Your first floor as the actual habitable floor, you could say that by creating, probably that second unit that uses the cellar was illegally created at some point, I don't know how they got it to the first six foot six inch height. So the, the question then goes to, if you're applying 54313.
I gotta see if we can, that's a question if we can apply it. If we can apply it, where do we go?
So that has to do with your as of right, so that you're expanding vertically, right, in some way, what would have affected you or the problem?
So if we expand vertically, we would still, at that point, perhaps we can get a, no, because we're a zero lot line, we still can't get the special permit for the FAR.
No, no, this is about.
So we'd still have to come for, for the variance for the floor area bump.
No, no, this is, oh, no, you're not over floor area, you're under floor area here, right?
We, right, oh, I apologize.
So you're under floor area, so that's the point, if you were at floor area, then you're having less of an argument, right? So your allowable floor area is 435, right? So you have plenty of room to play.
Right, I, I understand, so I'll, I'll research that section and see what we come up with.
And your building height here is 27 seven existing, much of which isn't used, it's just in the peak, so according to that, as of right, you could go up to, I don't know, 35.
35.
That was allowed.
35, yeah.
So according to that, with those two floors that are above, that are your first floor and up, without demolition, because I'm not suggesting demolish the house, you, you might be able to get a habitable, habitable house here as a price. So then, so that then goes to the question of, do you really need, do you qualify, does the hardship you complain of really prevent you from creating a house with, that meets reasonable living standards?
Right, I think that's something that still needs to be defined a little bit, because I don't, although mention of some case law for habitability, I don't think that's actually been defined, and I don't know what the standard is.
Well, I mean.
I think you're going to articulate, counsel, that a subterranean living space with a ceiling height of six feet is not sort of up to.
Right, the next question was with regard to the first and second floor, do we need to go beyond the existing envelope of the existing house? If we, if we vertically enlarge instead of going horizontal, your question was.
Wouldn't that be enough?
That's the question.
Right, and so, for example, these room sizes, when I look at the layout on the first floor, where, you know, this is laid out as a two family house, so it's a little bit, there's two living rooms on the first floor, so it's not an, go ahead, yeah.
It is, the first CVO, I believe, says one family dwelling.
Yes.
Yeah, from 1924. Says one, one family dwelling.
Is there a subsequent one?
Yeah.
There is.
Yeah, in the 50s, it was, it looks like it was converted to a two family.
It actually has.
The CVO says.
It was built as a one family, I mean.
Right.
But, but at least it's illegal to have, it says it was converted, right? But whether or not that living room in this, in this basement was a legal occupiable space is another thing.
Right.
But they're showing, they're labeling, living room, two living rooms on the first floor, on the actual first floor.
Right, but part of his argument was that it was the layout, the small room sizes and all of that, and can you really base your variance, your uniqueness on the layout and small sizes of the rooms if you've cut up the building yourself?
I don't know if that was to my uniqueness, it may not be clear, and I can amplify in my statement, it may have just been to my habitability argument. The small sizes of those rooms and the layout of those rooms.
Right, but that went to your obsolescence argument, which was your uniqueness argument.
And this is, we, we kind of get in this, you know, circle, circular logic every time we discuss this, this point, and I'll, I'll try and break it down, but that was toward, that, that spoke to the obsolescence of this home, how we need a larger home to accommodate modern living.
Right, so, okay, but so, you know, if you just look at the rooms, if this was laid out in some more normal way, not trying to cram in two apartments into a place that says you shouldn't really have two apartments, then the room sizes, you know, it's almost the eight by 12 rooms, right? It's not a bad, that, bedroom size, nine by 13, 10 by 13, those are.
We'll, we'll take a look and see, we'll take a look and see if we can enlarge it. If we can enlarge it the way the chair is mentioning, then we'll take a look and see if it can be rearranged. If it cannot be rearranged, then we're stuck with a home that's arguably 890 square feet of, of occupiable space on the first floor. The basement, we agreed, is six foot ceilings, it's not an occupiable space, or is not habitable for modern living. And the attic rooms, I'll, I'll take a look at the square, it's about 400 square feet for attic space, for rooms in those attics. So if we can enlarge the way the chair is, is suggesting, we could take a look and see if, if it's something that does accommodate us.
Okay, so with respect to the first floor, I think you need to find, you need to the basement level, you need to cite code, and maybe it's not non-compliant wall, but it is code.
Yeah.
About the minimum ceiling heights for an occupiable space.
And also probably minimum room sizes, like for bedrooms, et cetera. Because if, if code allows you what you have already, you have to kind of overcome that in some way, maybe it, you know, houses in this area, you know, typically have, you know, rooms of a certain size and.
Right.
And, I don't know, but.
Okay.
You have to overcome what the code says is the, is the minimum.
Because, because I, I do want to say that you still do have an issue about, like, how much of a, let's just say you establish that you had a unique or obsolete building as far as you think, right? But then that doesn't just give you, the whole idea of a variance is to make you whole compared to the neighbor, right? So that doesn't give you the, then the option to double the size of the building, or. So that doesn't give you the, then the option to double the size of the building, or make it the biggest house on the block. Like, if something has to limit the ask, right? And it can't be the ask, that I know we have case law on, like, in some research just now, where the ask has to be related, and I think as Commissioner Ockley Brown said, to the land itself, right? Not to the personal desires of the family who's going to live there, right?
So I guess as, as Commissioner Hinkson said, that we should be looking at what's in the area, what is standard for the area, and go with that, perhaps?
We've looked at that before.
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how, because you can't look at a mansion down the street and say, oh, it's like life is a drag, I need to have a mansion.
No, but I, I think that... Previously, we've looked at a generalized sort of character of, of what type of homes are, are in a particular neighborhood. I can't remember the exact case that we, we looked at that, maybe the other commissioners a while will remember that.
I remember looking at, like, building code. We had a couple of cases in Brooklyn where they cited to building code requirements for height and, and habitable room sizes as a reason to add on space.
Right. And that was, in those contexts, what I remember most specifically, or again, I always talk about these are the little walkover's that had 614 square feet in them, and, you know, those were not intended to be lived in year-round, that was supposed to be a place where you, like, change your bathing suit, but now it's a big house. So that, here, we cannot meet any kind of minimum standard of living, whereas this ultimately five-bedroom house, if you were to actually count up these rooms, right? Maybe it won't be a five-bedroom, we can lay it out in a way that doesn't make use of an illegal living room, but nevertheless, a house of, say, two to three bedrooms, that's not a, an impossible level, right? It's a perfectly nice size for an average family.
But at the minimum, you've got to overcome the, the code issue. If, if it's undersized according to code, move forward. If, if you've got reasonable rooms of a reasonable size and fits code, that explains why that shouldn't be what we'd be looking at as a guide.
I think my other concern is this, in this area, the list of sites that you have indicated as unique sites. First of all, even most of them, you know, they have dwelling units more than one, many of them have two, three dwelling units. So to, to say that this site is unique, and for a one-family to need this additional space to be in a house that was a two-bedroom in this neighborhood, where we have two, three-bedroom units in lots that are much smaller, with lots smaller's footprint, it's going to be a, I, I would like to know how that is going to be addressed as part of why this case, this site is unique, and, and the other sites are not facing that sort of kind of constraint. I mean, we have, there is one site, which is, lot area is 1,787 square feet, and that, or, or 2,000 square foot, and that has three bedrooms. So, I really...
Yeah, we have a lot of these. 13 of the 19 lots in the study are equal to or narrower than the subject.
Right.
Some are, 11 of those are 10 feet narrower as a one lot, right? Also, seven houses in the study have floor area approximately equal to or less than the subject. So then, you know, if we go to Commissioner Hinkson's point, look around the neighborhood, we just looked around the neighborhood, seven of the houses are smaller or equal. So...
All right, I'll, I'll go through this, but that'll go as to the, to the minimum variance. That'll...
Well, no, it goes to whether or not you made an A.
Yeah.
We're still an A.
That's the, no, the unique, all right.
Yeah.
I'll work.
How much, if you could make A, you are entitled to under B, is the next part of the question, you know?
All right.
Was fair, because what I think is being asked for is, no, that's the mansion version of what I want. That's not what I, what makes it work for me in a day-to-day living where everyone needs to have a kitchen or something like that.
Right, okay, so we'll take a look.
And then I just had that question about where you got the data for the...
It was taken off of Department of Buildings, not off Sanborn, Department of Buildings, Department of Finance.
So that was the status of homes as of 1987 on the block, or '78?
I think it was or a permit within six months, or, I have to go through it.
So the, all those other lots were not developed with residential uses?
They had two-family homes or, or one-family homes.
Okay.
Oh, and then also, we had a, a letter, an opposition that was concerned about parking. You know what that's written about?
Yeah, that came up at the community board, and then the residents, someone stood up and explained that we're providing a parking spot that's required. They may have thought it was a community facility or some sort of commercial use, that we're, we're providing a single, we're asking for, and we have a single parking spot there.
I also would like to, clarification of why a waiver under section 25621 is being required. And I'm trying, and I went back and looked at the regulation, and I'm wondering, is it the side lot ribbon definition?
So side lot, this is not a side lot ribbon, side lot ribbon definition is that you have open area from the, from the front along the side yard all the way to the intersection of where the rear yard is.
Right.
So since you have the, the house interrupts that...
And therefore you don't meet the side lot...
And therefore you don't meet the side lot ribbon.
And is that the waiver you need?
Yeah, because we're parking with...
But that's not what the statement of fact, statement of fact is saying, the reason is the, the distance between the...
Street wall and the street.
The street wall and the street, so...
Well, that, we would be allowed, if we had a side lot ribbon, we'd be allowed to park there.
Okay, so it's just not clear.
I'll clarify, okay, no problem.
Um, what, what I don't, again, understand about this, unless you went to DOB and you asked specifically, is if your extension, let's say, has a side yard, because you're proposing in your extension to have an actual side yard, then you create a side lot ribbon, right?
No, because the house would still interrupt the...
No, but that's an existing, I know that, but it's, that's an existing non-compliant condition.
I'd have to...
So I, that's the part I don't really understand. A lot of the times, DOB and the courts just look at the names and said, for a through lot, for example, I've got an existing building that is obstructing a piece of the center portion of the through lot. So that part's a non-compliant portion of the through lot. And then I add another building on the other side of the through lot, and they said, they say, okay, you didn't get the full 60 feet in the center, because you've got an existing building in the way, right? So that's the part I...
We, I can ask DOB.
You're not increasing the degree of non-compliance, why isn't that a side lot ribbon?
I can, it, it didn't meet the definition, and therefore we, we requested the waiver, but I can ask the architect, ask DOB for determination. Okay?
Okay.
So we have some homework.
Yeah, just a little. All right, so, um, so thank you for working with us on this. Okay, so how about February 4th? So that would give you...
That should be okay.
January 25th submission?
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
This concludes the public hearing for November 15, 2016.